Hi guys and welcome to my channel. Today is a wonderful day to be a human being, it seems. Yes, I'm sarcastic when I say that. You'll find out a little bit later. I'm gonna go through the following. Seattle Police Council Approves Plan to Defund Police Layoffs: 100 Cops/Salaries. I'm so proud of being part of this era of morons that would do something like that. Now, I don't think after this they're gonna have a problem with police officers leaving the force or forcing police officers to leave the force because I think they'll leave by themselves after they've seen the story, which is gonna get them exactly what they want. Which is, the next step will probably be getting them exactly what they want is getting, let's not say Trump, let's say the government pushing the fucking army inside there and killing a shitload of innocent people because of a bunch of idiots. Yeah, you know, these political games sometimes, it's just, it's just tiring. It's, it's never ending. I was gonna talk about the shooting outside of the White House now, but Trump's got so many people standing around him, watching him, willing to take a bullet for him. But there's 100 people less to take a bullet for these people that have voted to get rid of the police. I don't, I, 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 I don't understand them. Have you ever been in a situation where you actually needed the police? Really needed the police? Because if you haven't been in that situation before, okay, then you won't be able to comprehend what these idiots just did. 100 police officers, do you know how, how many people 100 police officers have to look after? I can't remember the ratio, but it's something fucking ridiculous. I mean, that's, I mean, I know we're in South Africa, we're short about 84, 87,000 police officers. And the ones that we do have, you know, six month training. I used to think I'm overweight until I watched a couple of them march. Now, we've got some good police officers. But, you know, there's some videos out there where you can see our police officers shit themselves when riots break out and that's all the, all the time now. I mean, we had a, we had a riot now on one of the main roads and just the previous week, somebody told me, "Don't use this road to work", a couple of weeks ago, because they're rioting on the road. When I asked him why they're rioting and burning tires and throwing rocks, he said, "I don't know." But in a very casual manner and I still laughed at him and I said, "You know, we've, we've gotten into a situation in South Africa where we don't even, you know, we don't even ask why they do stuff like that anymore. We just accept that they're doing it." Then on radio last week, we had a person who was talking about the traffic and was talking about the traffic and saying that, "Don't take this route, take another route" because of the fact that they are burning tires in the road and they're throwing cars with stones and there's been accidents with cars and there's been a bus set alight and, 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 and. And she ends off with cause still unknown. And this was, this started at the morning, 7 o'clock, okay? This news coverage that she had was at 4 o'clock the afternoon. So since 7 o'clock, 7 AM the morning until 4 PM, nobody could figure out why people were burning down buses, burning tires in the road, throwing innocent people with rocks. And I'm talking about rocks, I'm not talking about a little stone, I'm talking fucking rocks. Nobody could figure that out. This is what's waiting for you. Get rid of your police officers. Do it. Do it, you bunch of idiots. This is what, South Africa is what is waiting for you. Go down this path. You fucking lock yourself into a house. Where you have security, you have security slamlock doors in front of your, in front of your fucking rooms so nobody can get into your room. Where you have a security slamlock win, fencing in front of your window so if they set the house alight in case you're still in the house so that you can sneak out the window. Where you have CCTV cameras all around your house. Where you build walls and put gates up so people can't get into your yard and ask and beg for money because when they beg for money, they use it as a distraction and they come into, and other people come into your house. You walk, you walk outside every morning and you look and see, is there a can of Coke? Is there a marker somewhere next to the, to the paving, something like that? Something that could, could give my house away, has the wine to be broken in? Because that's what they do, they mark your house. They mark it with something stupid like throwing down a can of Coca-Cola on your, on your, on your pavement. So you guys don't know the shit that you're getting, that you're getting yourself into. Okay, so, so let me explain to you what happened in, in our, in our instance in South Africa. So we have a lot of farmers, which is contentious, fuck knows why, I'm not allowed to talk about it, it doesn't exist, blah, 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 the whole world doesn't believe us because we white, farmer, boer, racist, you know, the whole thing, okay? So I think the Americans will sort of start understanding now, now that all of you white folks are all racist. And even some of you, you poor, you know, you poor black dudes that are, you know, voting for Trump, "Oh yeah, you guys are racist as well." Who does? We can go live in the same area. So what happens, we used to have what they would call the, and this used to be mainly guys that came out of the army and they would walk around and work, they, they were called the commander and they would patrol in the evenings between the farms alongside the police. They got police weapons, police bullets, police, not police gear, but police outfits like, you know, bulletproof vesting and stuff like that. And then they patrol, patrol the areas, which is now being brought back. Now, these guys, the other day I saw a video clip of a guy that shot the shit out of one of these attempted on, let's call it farm robings. Because if I say farm, they were attempting to kill the old man of 70 and his wife of 71. You know, might end up in YouTube jail or something like that. So what happened is these, these guys went after them and they shot their cars fucked up. They, they, let's call them the commander, they, they just took apart this car. There were, there were, I think there were seven or eight of them in the car. Three of them were fucked up, there was like fucking 50 holes within these people. I mean, it was ridiculous. And to be dead honest, this, and this is my personal opinion, this was not a get the car off the road type of thing. This was, "I'm gonna get you back for all the white fucking people that you've killed." This is, "I'm gonna get you back for all the shit that you've caused in our country." You should have seen this car and if you cannot understand Afrikaans, you can understand what he's saying while he's walking there, filming while the people are dying, saying, "I shot this fucker, ya, lacka, graafio." Nice, you deserve it. That's the kind of mentality people go into when you lose the police and when the police not there. Because the police and the government didn't look after these bombers. And they saw their family members, their friends, you know, the guys next to them getting murdered, getting chopped up into pieces, babies getting gang raped, you know, getting set alight. You know, guys, eyelids being cut open so he can, he's forced to watch while they gang rape his wife. Old people being taken, a drill being taken to an old lady's knees because she doesn't wanna give up the, the lock to the, to the safe because she knows there's a grinder in the safe. And she knows that when they get the grinder, they're gonna go too fucking much worse than what they're gonna do with a drill. So she rather takes the drill to the, to the legs than, it's just, you guys, you guys don't know what you're doing and you're not standing up yet and you're making the biggest mistake of your lives when you think that somebody else is gonna come and help you. Because nobody's gonna come and help you, no fucking buddy, nobody came and helped us. Everybody spit on us and called us racists. Doesn't matter what the real story was. If you knew the real story, the photos that you see from all these wonderful journalists, the photos you see in the old South Africa where you have these vehicles and the army and the police going into the, the shacks and the black areas, you know what they were doing? They were saving people's lives, they were stopping the ANC from killing, what was it, the IFP, I think it was the IFP at that stage. There was Zulu fractions and Coza fractions, which is, one is, the Zulu fraction is obviously the ANC and the Coza, the Coza fraction is the ANC and the Zulu fraction was the IFP. And all these photos that you see where they're throwing these people with tomato, with tomatoes and, and stuff like that, it wasn't that the police did anything, the police pulled in there to try and keep people safe. Because the ANC were trained by the legendary Vietnamese leader in the method of the People's War, which a lot of people mistake to mean that it's a liberation of the people, it's not, it's using the people as shields, basically, that's what it boils down to. So what they would do is they would stand in between people and they would then shoot or throw firebombs or whatever and a bunch of kids and women and whatever in front of them would then get shot. And that would be then put on video. The same tactics that is now used by, guess who? We're not gonna say Black Lives Matter because it's not them, no, no, no. Now I see it's turned into Antifa, now it's definitely Antifa. Now, Black Lives Matters, matter that they're innocent. So let's call it Antifa. The same things Antifa is doing was done by the ANC back in the day. It's exactly the same methods, they're gonna start with the bombings very soon. They're gonna step up gradually, gradually, gradually. And you white guys will always stay racist. If you open your mouth, you're gonna be a racist. Yep. Welcome to my world. Anyway, let's go on, enough ranting and raving about what's waiting for you. Okay, so let's see, direct. Seattle, the Seattle City Police approves, approved proposals Monday that would reduce the police department by as many as 100 officers through layoffs and attri- attritions. What the fuck is that? Is that like? Oh, okay. "An action is supported by protesters who have marched in the city following the police killing of George Floyd in Monopolis, but strongly opposed by the mayor and police chief." Okay, so we do now know now by the leaked footage that George Floyd was high as a kite in a paranoid state. He refused to, to follow orders from a police officer. It's evident on the video, three, four times he told him, "Put your hands on the, on the steering wheel." He refused to, he was scratching around, I would say the guy was kind of fair. And then when he walked with him, he asked him nicely to keep on walking, keep on walking very nicely. Get in the car, get in the car, get in the car. "Sir, are you gonna shoot me?" "No, I'm not gonna shoot you." Calming him down. So I, in my opinion, I don't see anything wrong that the police officers did anything there. There's still the verdict out on the, the whole nine minutes on the throat thing that might have been a bit excessive. And nobody's coming up for that person, saying his name, maybe I get kicked off YouTube. So nobody's saying he was right, even though that position was something that was up until a couple of years, something that police trained people to do. And this is something that, that, that nobody, nobody reported on, is that they're all talking about, "Yeah, some of the states, they don't use it anymore." But nobody actually went to go and find out, do they actually use that? Is it illegal to use that? In a, in a situation where the guy is bigger than you, he's known as a bouncer, he's known as a criminal in that area. They could probably pick up from the license plate who he was, unless he was driving somebody else's car, but it sounded like it was his car. So they knew his history before they actually went in there. So, and he didn't wanna, he didn't wanna lie still. So, and he said he couldn't breathe even before the guy put his neck on his foot. The coroner also now realized that he died from a heart attack and not from the fixemia, fixitmia or what, even, yeah. So it's, it doesn't make it right, what he did. The problem is, well, everybody's throwing this accountability to one person and it's, I mean, if, if, if this was, if this was law and he was allowed to do it, then, you know, the guys have to pick up, the guys gotta pick up their hands and say, "Hey, we sorry, we still had this as part of the laws, we haven't written it out." Or our people are still being trained in other methods of handling a guy this size. Because he was a huge guy, I mean, yeah. Let's go on. "Wondered what's going on with the shooting at Trump there via the White House. Measures that would cut less than $4 million." Measures that would cut less than $4 million of the department's $400 million annual budget this year. Passed out of committee anonymously last week. Okay, so in other words, okay, this is scary. 400, 4 million, they have a $400 million annual budget, okay? They're cutting $4 million out of the budget by removing 100 police officers. So how much are the police officers actually getting paid? And where's the other money going to? "On Monday, only council member Tshwama Sarwant voted against the budget package, saying it does not do enough to defend the police." I fucking agree with you. One politician with a brain. "Seattle currently has about 1,400 police officers at $400 million budget. And 100 of those is $4 million cut in budget." So I wonder who gets the rest of the money. "Seattle currently has about 1,400 police officers and the reductions fell short of the 50% cut to the department, the department that many Black Lives Matter protesters are seeking. Several council members on Monday said the changes were, were a starting point in a long process to reimagine policing and public safety. The city council also cut police chief Carmen Best roughly $285,000 annual salary and the pay of other top police leaders. Although the final cuts to Best's salary were more modest than those approved last week, the council plan also takes offices of a team that removes homeless camps." The council plan also takes offices of a team that removes homeless camps. So there's gonna be no, we're removing homeless camps for you guys, okay? You're gonna have to do it yourself. "While we go and do everything in the summer, rebalancing packages, we have set the path forward for tremendous work in front of us as a council and as a city." Councilman Theresa Mosquito, Mosquita, said. Okay, so here's the thing, here's the thing. Did the police actually do anything wrong, guys? Why are they getting punished? They didn't burn shit in the street, they didn't go to people's houses and threaten them. They didn't damage private property. They didn't stand in a building and shoot fucking 11 police officers from the top. They didn't kill five police officers, they didn't kill 35 people in raids. They didn't kill little kids with stray bullets. They're all involved in stabbings, they didn't throw people with bricks, they didn't light the police cars on fire. Why are the police getting punished here? Why, why are 100 people getting fired that probably didn't have anything to do with this? They went probably close to George Floyd and all of this shit when it went down. But 100 of them are getting fired. Makes total fucking sense. Mayor Janine Durkan and Best had, and Best had urgent, urged the council to slow down its discussion about police budgets. Saying the issue could be taken up in earnest when the 2021 city budget is considered. They also said any layoff, layoffs would disproportionately target newer officers, often hired from black and brown communities. Okay, so it's okay if it's a white dude and they fire them? Ah, okay, now I see. So they're only asking for the budget to be rolled over to next year so they can fire the white guys and the black and brown community isn't affected. That sounds like black economic empowerment and employment equity, affirmative action, whatever you guys wanna call it, we have all of that in South Africa. So it really does sound like you guys are, you are all the way there, buddies. America, congratulations, you're turning into Africa. "Durkan has already targeted about $20 million in savings from the police budget this year, largely because of reduced revenues amid the COVID-19 pandemic. Last month, the mayor sketched out a plan to reduce the police budget by about $75 million next year by transferring parking enforcement officers in 911 call center and other areas out of the department. As US Attorney in Seattle, Durkan previously pushed the Justice Department investigation and that found officers too quick to use force, leading to a 2012 consent decree with the federal government. Reviews by an independent monitor have determined that the changes under the consent decree have led to a drop in how often police use force. But critics have said the department's actions during recent protests show not enough progress has been made." Okay, so what, or the, okay, we're burning down the place. Oh. You should have, you should have spoken a little bit louder, but not hit me with a stick. No, I, maybe I shouldn't make this video today. I mean, it's fucking depressing, I mean, it's, I mean, I, I don't get this. Why would a first world country wanna become a shitload like South Africa? I'm, I'm, I'm just, the police that are being affected now didn't do anything. All of the guys that are getting fired are probably P guys that have never actually, that have been sitting in an office for the past fucking couple of years or sitting at a desk job doing something. It's not gonna be a guy that went out and beat the shit out of a black guy and a black kid in, in, in the street, you know? People's idea of, of punishment is, it's become like, it's become like gangsters, you know, like the, to give you a good example, like the mafia type of thing where if you do something against them, they steal from them, they kill you and they kill all your family and your family's friends and the pets and everything like that. Now, Antifa's got that same, same mentality and Black Lives Matters has got the same mentality. It's like, "We're not just gonna take you out, we're gonna take your whole department out, we're gonna take out your whole city." So 100 police officers, that, it doesn't sound like it's a lot of police officers, but if you take, if you take the ratio between police officers versus people in that town, you'll find that, you know, it's probably about 1,000 for, for every 1,000 to 10,000 to 100,000 people, there's one police officer. I don't know what to tell you guys. You're so in trouble, it's not even funny. And I, I, I would like to tell you guys that you're gonna be okay, but I can't see that happening. This is the same shit that we went through, the whole world calls us racists and everybody, everything we do is racist, doesn't matter if you, you have ischemia to feed black people, doesn't have, you know, that's, doesn't matter what you do, doesn't matter if you were one of the first people to have black friends, it doesn't matter if you, if you were a DJ in a black club while the other people were looking on and saying, "How can you do that? How can you be friends with black people?" You know, getting shot at in, in the black club while, you know, it's, guys, it's. You guys need to stand up for yourselves and, and unfortunately, white guys can't stand up for themselves because they're just gonna be called racist. Um. So. I mean, I appreciate the guys like, um. You know, the, the, the guys that stand up for the white guys, the, 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 the black guys, because they get a lot of shit from there. I mean, if, if you're white and you think you get a lot of shit, just imagine being black and standing up for white people. Holy shit. I wouldn't wanna live in, in, in a black neighborhood if I was one of those guys. Larry Elderman, imagine that. Being Larry Elderman living in the hood, you know? Get his ass fucking kicked. Wes Peterson, uh, the radio host, that Christian guy. Imagine him. Okay, but there'll be white people that fuck him up as well because he's like, he has no fault there. Allowed with bits. So, yeah. So you're defunding the police, guys. But at least there's rumors going around that, um, there's internal. Things happening within the army. Where local enforcement is training with, um. Army that is supposed to be shipped off to other countries. Um. Tim. Suggested it might, Tim Cost, Tim, for Tim Cost suggested it might be. Training exercises because China is ready to make war against America. I don't think that China will ever go to war with America. I think they're not fucking stupid. Um. They'll try and turn the rest of the world against them and, and, and they might try and settle it on Africa, take, expand. Um, and, you know, grow. Grow the country via other continents, but I don't think they're stupid enough to take. To take America on it first, um. But what I do see happening is. These guys fighting and training together because they know there's something that's gonna happen internally inside of the country. And if I look at how Antifa attacked those police officers, there was some serious fucking training that went in there. I mean, a guy walking past with a bag, nobody knows who he is, all of a sudden he just drops a shitload of knives. For people to pick up. People are, people, you don't even see them. It's just. Knives are gone, they're all in different directions. A flag. A flag. They pull apart a flag and it's got fucking sticks with sharpened edges. To stab the police officers with. Water, frozen water bottles that they throw the police with. Intended to seriously fucking arm the police officers. And these guys are, well, I mean, the guy gets dressed in black behind the flag. Nobody knows who it is. They all look the same. Not the black guys, man, come on, they're fucking racist, yeah. Talking about the Antifa guys wearing all black clothes and. Now you get to wear a mask. And you get told to wear a mask if you take it off, you're in trouble. Guys, it's been fun. I'll get you on the next round.